As soon as you start, as soon as you sit at the table, we'll see. Okay, everyone, if I could have your attention.
Hey, guys.
Hey, can I have your attention?
Morning.
You know, we'll be here till around o'clock if you keep talking, especially Chris. This is our capital improvement plan for five years of park. On October the 18th will be our operating part, which includes the cash part of this. So we do have two budget sessions for your pleasure. And I'm going to, our clerk would please note who's here and please. Monica, it's all yours.
She probably tapped it first. Okay. Got to get my first count clock. Let's get going. So, good morning, council.
Good morning.
We are here today. We're going to start by talking about general capital improvement on parks funds this morning. So let's start with just a definition and a level playing field so that we all understand what a general capital improvement fund means. So general capital, general fund is the primary operating fund in the city. This is the one that we talk about all the time as 80% income tax. This is the one that most people think about when they think about local government budgeting. Capital improvements are major investments. So let's think about public infrastructure like roads and utility maintenance and parks. Therefore, the general capital improvement fund is a compilation of very large projects that are funded through our primary operating fund. Does that make sense to everybody? So council, you know, our brand is about strong economic development with community support and partnerships. It's also about our historic preservation alongside modern amenities. And most importantly, it's about keeping our promises through community spirit and high quality services. So the reason I bring up this is because this reflects the general fund capital improvement. Because in 2008, we promised to invest in parks and infrastructure if the community allowed us to have a 2% income tax with reciprocity. It's important to remember that the 2% income tax, the first 0.25% in the yellow goes to the Parks and Rec Fund. So from there, we have a net 1.75. Out of that, and still today, still today, we do the 0.25% I call it the Parks Fund. And that pays for debt service, programings, facilities, and all those things. On the infrastructure side, we promised and we wrote guidelines into our debt policy that of that 1.75, we would invest 20 to 25% into capital improvements every single year. So year over year, we put the light green directly into capital improvement, capital improvement funds. So what we're talking about today is the Parks and Recreation Dedicated Income Tax. And we're also talking about then 20 to 25% that we give to the capital fund. This, the rest of this dark green is operating. And so we'll talk about that in October. So it's just a visual for you to see what we're, the part of the income tax we're talking about today. The first part of this morning, we're going to share a draft, and this is just a draft, of where we'd like to invest our infrastructure in 2026 to 2030 using the general capital improvement along with the parks investment. There are other revenue sources that leave these projects, but Parks Fund and general capital make up the majority of the revenue, which means most of these improvements are reinforced by income tax. So just a reminder, oh, nope, I'm a head on nap. And back.
Thanks, Monica. So this is just a quick summary slide of essentially everything Monica just went over. So we are focusing on capital projects today. So those big, heavy investments we make into our city's capital and into our assets, operations is coming. That's going to be the funding in October. So here's just a quick couple bullet points of what we are going to be talking about with our capital projects. But really, the main point is that third bullet there is just to say, hey, you know, of our income taxes, Monica said 20 to 25% of the non-Parks and Rec is where those are funded from, the majority of the projects. So, yep, thank you, Jason. So before we dive into the specifics of each of the projects we're going to talk to you about today, I thought it would be a good idea if we talk about what our different financing levers are for capital projects. So first and foremost, we do have a policy in place set by council and reviewed annually by our finance audit committee. And it is known as our capital financing and debt policy. And essentially, this policy is here to tell us which of these levers we can explore. And also, what's the hierarchy? Which comes first, which comes second, and then what's the last resort that we have to resort to? What's important about this policy is that the goal is to keep our cost of capital low. So make sure we pay as little interest as we can to keep it affordable for our customer, for our residents, reduce our credit risk, but then also help us to maintain our solvency and keep our triple A bond rating as a city. So as you can see here in this graphic, the first option, which is our primary option and our most frequently used option for capital projects is what we call pay-as-you-go, which means use cash reserves and current year revenue proceeds. So what's great about this is that it is cash, it is money coming in the door. So when we utilize this funding source, it's immediately paying for these capital projects. We don't book a liability to any of our balance sheet, so there's no debt service coming. Now, one thing to consider as a caveat to that is that depending on the division, they may or may not have sufficient cash reserves to support a very large capital expense. Or if for some reason revenues are a little volatile in a particular year, using cash to pay for these could be a little tough. And so that's where we lead into the next actually lever that we can pull, which is called interfund advances. This is where essentially the city can advance money to a particular area to help them pay for their investments into these assets. So what's great about this is that it's very low cost of debt, it's actually 0% because we don't charge city to city any interest on those advances that we make. But it is considered debt, and I would call it informal debt because it does need to be repaid back to the city. So there are technically debt service payments, but they are much lower because there's no interest involved. So if those advances can be made, because for some reason, you know, this is based upon how much available cash we have essentially at the city. So if we are either investing in other assets or any other initiatives that we have, we may not have that available. So we start to look at low cost or zero cost options. The first of which are grants. So we've explored many grants here at the city, and we actually have a couple coming up that you're going to hear about in some of the slides. And grants are a great way to help support capital infrastructure because they are direct cost offsets. So most of them are either primarily funded or fully funded and reimbursable type expenditure reimbursements for these expenses we do for capital. Now, as you can imagine, these grants are very competitive. So there is a strong market in some cases where a lot of municipalities are fighting for these. But also, they can be a little focused. So sometimes you may have an idea of what we're looking for, but there are sometimes strict regulations on what we can use those funds for. So we just have to keep that in mind. Jumping to the next low cost option are our low interest loans that we can apply for. And so we have done this a handful of times, actually, to support some of our capital. So some examples of this are from the Ohio Public Work Commission, the Ohio Water Development Authority, and then also the Environmental Protection Agency. So these loans tend to be anywhere from 0% to 2.5%, which is a very affordable loan for us to do. And so we always try to look for these low cost options when we're exploring infrastructure into our city. Obviously, this is still a loan. This is debt service, so we do have to pay that back. So we just always add that to our debt service schedule and keep an eye on that. Finally, the last option we have here is to issue formal debt. We go out to the market, we issue bonds. So a lot of us are very familiar with this. We just did this with East of Africa. So this is our last resort. As we go down through these lists and we try to consider all of this, this is where we go to at the very end. For one main reason is that the cost of capital is expensive. This tends to be the most expensive form of these options. But then also because we carry a debt service for a long period of time. So what's great about these bonds, there are benefits to this, and some of those benefits, so it eliminates the need for large upfront cash investments. So we don't need to put that $5, $10 million upfront in cash. We can use the debt to kind of smooth out those payments through the debt service payment. What's great about that is that for us as a city, it makes our budgeting more smooth. But also to our residents, it creates a nice level set of expenses. So that way, when we consider rates, it's more level versus the volatility of a town depending on capital investments. Additionally, this, by doing loans such as this, and we do these big capital investments, especially into some of our assets, we're passing the cost to the future individuals who will be utilizing them. So if we collect those income taxes, we collect those charges for services, things like that such, the people utilizing the assets will be in the future. And so that's another benefit, whereas cash, it's those who have paid it in the past. And so we try to reserve those funds for people who are paying for that. So it passes it to a retrospective rate area. So that's a quick overview of all the different levers we consider as a city and how we kind of look at each of these different areas and how we evaluate our capital investments. Yes?
You've gone through basically the general capital improvement, income tax side. What are we doing on the enterprise fund side, utility side?
Well, that starts after the break. So we'll do an introduction before the enterprise funds after the break.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we distinguish.
Yeah, so this morning is general fund, that's why I think we're talking about the general fund. And then we take a break, and then we'll introduce the enterprise funds.
And just so you know, the grants that we've gotten, like Cleveland Avenue, like 13 million. So these grants are not like $3,000 or something. They're substantial grants, like Sunbury and other places. I think, David, you had your hand up.
I did. Interfund advances, you said that's debt that we don't, it's like trade. Is that because it's a law or that's just like our good bookkeeping?
Yes.
That's like what we like to do.
Yes, so we are efficient in our finances. And so if we have those cash reserves in our reserve, we can advance those to some of these different divisions. So they can utilize those temporarily. So it creates a nice, smooth financial for them, but then they also repay it to us.
There are also regulations depending on the fund whether you can do that or not. So what we're talking about here is really the general fund. The general fund is the most flexible of the funds because as long as it's a city service, we can enter, transfer, or over. But sometimes when we transfer it over, we can transfer it back. So there's tons of regulation. We are a highly regulated industry. And so what we're trying to do is just give you a high level. But if you want more detail on how like your governmental funds happen, you can sit down and talk about it. Any other questions for Matt already before we move along? All right, great. So all the projects on this presentation clearly align with council's strategic plan. And so we wanted to touch base on pointing out where that all belongs before we cut into the actual projects. So you guys have seen this probably on a million times. It's quite, behind this rainbow, there is a more detailed strategy. So I just wanted to point out that there are like bullet points about what we're supposed to be spending our time and energy on. So we'll start on this first side. Excellent comprehensive city services states that we need to do well planned and maintain the infrastructure, which is basically what this entire day is about. Under mobility options, you'll see in the presentation that we're connecting workforce to commerce through sidewalks. We're also using trails to connect neighborhoods, schools, and parks. There are a couple collaborative partnerships that resulted in grant funding. And these mobility options, which do include 2.3 million in bike paths and 2.9 million in proposed edge mobility improvements. We're going to keep our dedication to the city within park through greenways, walkable trails, bikeways, and street space. There are strategic improvements in our award-winning vibrant facilities and programs. And we are doing reservation projects to protect natural resources. Since this is a budget, it aligns with reasonable fiscal, or responsible fiscal management because it is an annual balance budget, and then there is a vibrant forecast. Investing in projects like East of Africa are allowing us to find stable revenue sources to help pay for all of these strategic investments. So that hits all four of the continue-to-do side of the strategy. On the outcome side, as a strategic outcome of council, we're making progress through these capital investments to connect businesses and residents, which is under thriving business climate. We're keeping Uptown authentic and alive through the continuation of fire suppression program and designing construction of parking lots. Some of the capital improvements are part of innovative initiatives to redevelop and reinvest in our communities, which is under safe and vibrant neighborhoods. This includes approximately $500,000 for pedestrian and bicycle crossings and school zone flexure replacements. You can stay connected and engaged through the design, construction, and point of contact for all of these projects on our Go Westerville page. And if you haven't visited the Go Westerville page, it really does sound like a great tool. As for the lenses that council presented in their strategy, we looked at the DEIB lens when we're designing our roads and our infrastructure and our parks to ensure accessibility in our infrastructure. We're performing transformational leadership through future planning, embracing change for the collective impact, and telling our story. So to fill you in on our story, I'm actually going to invite Dave Athlin and Nate Lang up here. And they're going to share their chapter of the story by starting with planning and development.
I'd just like to, at the high level, Matt, you and I talked about this when we were considering that. But this is the way I look at things. If I replace everything today, my guesstimate is it's around $2 billion, including utility assets as well. That's probably a low estimate given this scheme of things today. What I'm getting at is if our average is 100 years, that means we need to be spending $20 billion a year. That's not just capital, but that's capital maintenance, if you understand what I'm talking about. So if what we're trying to get to is, are we spending enough to keep us steady with respect to infrastructure rather than, you know, 15 years from now, all of a sudden we have a $30 million break or something like that? Anyway, just a high level concept. We used to have it in the back pages of the book, but it never was materialized into what should we be spending every year. And it's just a, again, my guesstimate of lane miles, line miles, sewer pipes and all that with my brain is around $2 billion, but I'll tell you that that's probably a low number.
All right, planning and development. Good morning, council. Good morning, Team Westerville. What day is it? Saturday. Kind of lost track this week. It's been kind of busy. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all today. Obviously, we have pretty heavy lift with CIP and putting in infrastructure, which are our assets. This is mostly the Nate Lang Show, our city engineer this morning. But I just wanted to introduce this concept and pick up on some of the thoughts that Monica shared with you. She just noted in her introduction that your strategic plan knows well-planned infrastructure. So part of that is the planning of the infrastructure itself, from our community plan to your strategic plan that Monica highlighted for you. But there are other plans, the Park and Rec Plan, the Economic Development Strategy, that we're all part of together with Rachel's team. And there are numerous other policies that all the departments utilize. Some of those come to us from federal and state agencies, and some of those are Westerville-derived policies. But really, what the CIP and budget ultimately helps us do is implement those plans and those policies on the ground in our neighborhoods and in our community. So it's the ultimate implementation tool for these physical assets. Really, when you have the planning right, the CIP just falls out from your plans and your policies. Don't get me wrong, it's very complicated. I have a huge binder back there that I didn't bring up today. And we go through a large, year-long process as Team Westerville to develop what you're going to see today. So Nate will take you through the rest.
Thanks, Dave. Good morning, everyone. What's that? Yeah, please. Thank you. So we wanted to get started today talking about our corridor traffic, how we develop our CIP program and the tools that we use to do so. So we want to start with the corridor traffic studies, crash studies. So as a reminder, we kind of discussed this last year when East of Africa was being developed. We did a westside traffic impact study. Sunbury Road, we did a corridor study. Those help guide our CIP for improvements in those areas. So there's also an annual crash study, so we're looking at all of our signalized intersections in the city and seeing if there's something that's changed over rolling three years to determine, did a traffic path change that we're unaware of, or did something happen that we need to look at? So those are some of the things that are guiding our program. The other item Monica mentioned was the 2008 income tax increase, Executive Order 0801, which was revised in 2021, that established our formal policies and procedures for capital assets. So from our standpoint, this sets 70% of our super arterioles rated good or better. That is based on our PCI. We'll talk about that. And again, if I use an acronym, PCI, that's pavement condition, and that, please stop me. I use acronyms all the time.
One of our goals is to put an entire paragraph together. It's just 11.
It's very engineering, and I apologize. So. So 60% of all other roads rated as good or better, and 80% of our bridges rated good or better. That's a different scale. That's a 1 to 9 scale, so seven or better, nine being good. Putting this together is a collective collaborative process with all of our divisions. So in quarter one, quarter two of every year, I'll have a meeting with all of our divisions, get everybody in a room. What we're going to do there is go over potential new projects as well as the projects that we, hey, we've had some water breaks out there. We need to look at the water name before we do something out there. So those are some of the, some of the things that we will talk about in this meeting and make sure we're all coordinating. I kind of talked about with our roadways. So our roadways are inspected biannually, every two years, part of our policy. And that gives us those PCI ratings to let us know, are we meeting our goal 70% or better, 60% or better? I'll dive into that a little bit with the next slide, but I want to talk about our bridge inspection. So we do biannual bridge inspection, bridge inspections through the statewide and useful inspection program. This is a free program put on by the Department of Transportation. They go out and rate all of our bridges, give us that score. We actually hire a third-party firm to then look at things that the state isn't looking at. They're looking for structural integrity. So they might provide us, this third-party might provide us items clearing that may need to be done, debris removal, something as much as graffiti. Sometimes we get into these corridors and they'll find some graffiti. So that will guide our CIP for bridge maintenance. And then lastly, there's a picture here on the right, some of our, one of our manuals. The manual on uniform traffic control devices, or as we lovingly call it, the OMU TCD. So again, so we also have a traffic engineering manual, a location and design manual. These are all manuals from an engineering standpoint that we're using to design and guide our programs. So if we get outside of those manuals, it can open ourselves up to some liability issues. So as long as we stay within these manuals, we're good. So there are some areas in the country where you may see, I don't know, has anybody ever seen the 3D crosswalks where it looks like you're driving down the road and the crosswalk's elevated? Or has anybody ever seen those markings? Okay, so those are non-standard markings. You are not like flying bats in any of these manuals. So from my standpoint, I see that, and that would scare me for that municipality because that's a non-standard. So if someone comes up to it and they're like, oh my God, what is happening? And swerve. You just put something out there that could be a problem for the municipality or your city. So we want to do the same thing as上次.
Nate, there's an obit of an ant, pedestrian crossings, where all you got to do is stripe it. And we determine whether it's safe or not to actually have lights for it. I think that going above and beyond for safety. So I understand the elevated thing, that you don't know it and all of a sudden you swerve. But the other one is just an element of safety that you add, plus the traffic calming. Sometimes we go that extra mile in that. We're not as prolific as Tacoma Park, Maryland in traffic calming. But I just wanted to add that element in, which I think is correct. If I'm not correct, please tell me the OMU TCD LST is correct or not.
No. So yeah, you're correct. You do get, we'll call it points. So if you, adding other enhancements to an intersection or lighting, so when you're evaluating, striding, for example, you do get points for lighting on your retroreflector scores. And again, we're using those, there are guides within the traffic engineering manual for exactly what you're talking about. Where it shoulds and shalls. So there's the shalls, the things that you're required to do, and shoulds, the things that you should be doing that help improve whatever you're trying to advance.
In the 1980s, council was the first line of issues with respect to traffic. They established the Traffic Commission in 1986. And this manual, which is alphabet soup, engineer went to, but council was the front line. And we actually got a traffic commission that actually yielded how the public can participate in items such as lighting, intersection, or traffic calming ahead of and in response to the public participation that we aspire to. So it just, we don't have a traffic commission anymore. And thankfully, we don't have as many traffic issues that come up. But when they do come up, that man has been a godsend to us.
Thank you, yeah. As Monica says, I give them the.
I give them to me.
So kind of moving through, okay, PCI. So this is, this is our city, our city in roads. It says 2024-25. As I mentioned, it's a biannual, it's a biannual.
Biannual.
Sorry.
Biannual is every, twice a year. Biannual, every two years.
Biannual, sorry. Every two years.
It happens to all of us, Nate.
Especially David. So this was done in 2023 for 2024 and 2025. We have completed this year's. We just don't have the updated data. I can't say from what we've looked at before we've gone through and checked to make sure everything is correct. Our PCI was a 72 in 2023. It's a 70, it's in the same, it's in the ballpark, 73. So we didn't go down. So our preventive maintenance treatments are working. And I just want to say, I'm in a central Iowa engineers group where some of the other municipalities discuss issues within the engineering community. And we brought up PCIs among other communities, and a lot of them went to 50s and 60s. So I just wanted to throw out that we are, we are above the certain data areas.
Is this the same or different from what we saw last year?
This is the same one.
As this last year.
Yeah, next year, I hope I have, I hope I'll have an updated map. This is our map of our 2025 capital improvements. So I'll have a slide coming up here to kind of go over all of our treatments. But this is everything that we did this year. Still working on right now. I'm sure you've been out and seen some crews around. So we're still trying to finish up this year within the next couple of weeks, hopefully. We actually, we're lucky enough this year to get really good bid prices. So we do have some additional funds that we will likely be bringing to even the coming weeks to add to this map for some more streets to repair this year. to add to this map for some more streets to repair this year. So, these are our, I'll call it our five main treatments. The top three are preventative, the bottom two are the more expensive. Really what we don't want to get to, but eventually some of them we will get to. So, we've talked about rejuvenation, we get on statewide contracts.
Everybody just watch.
I'm sorry, please, just saying.
lotion. Then the next is crack fill. Some people, I've heard of road snakes is always a term that I hear from residents. So, crack fill, what that's doing, we don't want water infiltration to our pavement. This is what helps prevent that. Again, preventative maintenance treatment, micro-surfacing. They're actually doing that around town right now. That is, what I always refer to that as like a driveway sealer, but a much thicker, stronger driveway sealer. It recoats the surface, helps prevent continued oxidation, salt treatments, everything else that comes with the environment. The last two, plain and overally, that's your new asphalt. So, we're starting to get into more expensive items. And then reconstruction is our, that's, we don't have any. Roads starting to get to a point where we don't have any treatment we can deal with, it's a whole reconstruct. And we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit coming up here. Before we get to the future, I wanted to just do a quick recap of, this was such a big project this year, East of Africa update. Obviously, it kicked off earlier this year. If you haven't driven by or seen it, it's, it's really coming together right now. I mean, it is moving, there are lots of crews out there. We've completed, for the most part, the earthwork is substantially completed. The underground utilities, so the sanitary sewers installed, the water is substantially installed. Right now, they're working on electric communication conduits, working on storm. The new ponds are functioning, they're actually functioning not only for the future ponds that they will leave, but right now they're temporary settlement basins. So, before waters leave the site, for the most part, they're building these ponds and settling. And then kind of the next steps, they're cutting in roads right now, so you might drive by and you can kind of see the roadways. Their goal is to have the east side, the roads on the east side of Africa Road, new curves and some form of asphalt in this year. So, you'll really see roadways coming in in the coming months. No, no.
Just as a pause, I know we're talking about general fund, capital improvements. This project is not paid for by a general fund. So, just to clarify, it is paid for through TIP funds. So, it is return on investment from previous projects that are paying for this project. So, there's, this is not an income tax-based project. I just want to clarify, since we said this whole morning about income tax. This particular project is not, this particular project is paid for by TIP funds.
Just the East Africa messaging, certainly from an engineering standpoint, it looks like scorched earth. I mean, we're redoing the earth, but we are actually preserving the ravine, tree canopy and all that. So, the messaging, if we can get to that side of it so that people don't see us as scorched earth.
Yeah, I think the next step, we do need to let the public know. The three, the east side of this project, the three main plots on that side are substantially finished, they're nice and integrated. We're actually going to be planting that and farming that. So, that will be planted, farmed, taken care of. The sediment basins are working, so the stormwater is going in and settling it out. Those are both things that our environmental community is probably very interested in, and we just haven't gotten that message out, so we'll work on that.
Thank you. And to add, the, hopefully here in the coming weeks, the front two will be farmed as well. So, that's the, that's the intent going forward. And then there will be some work this winter as well, probably some working around the ponds with some of the decorative items, as well as some conduit installation still continuing this, this winter. All right, so, we want to, we want to start with the, our, I'm going to call our biggest project in terms of, from a resident's standpoint. That's our annual street and bridge maintenance program. So, our street rehab A, our street rehab B projects. So, this year, it's 8.6 million across a couple of funds. Those funds are the, obviously, general capital, but within that is the Permissive Fund, the State Highway Fund, and Arterial Fund. Those kind of dictate where that money goes within, within that 8.6 million. So, for the arterial fund, for example, that money can only be used on arterial roads. So, just wanted to make, make that clear.
So, some were being regulated on how much we can spend on certain things, is that what you're saying?
We, in a sense, so if we go back to the policy that we have to have.
Of our own policy.
Correct.
Nobody else's talent, the states have, okay.
No, well, yeah, correct, yes. We dictate where that money has to go to.
Thank you.
And by we, we mean you.
Yeah. So, this obviously helps, this, this project, this 8.6 million, helps meet our city's maintenance policy, our sustainability goals, we talked about preventative maintenance, the keeping asphalt in place and functioning is our whole, like, bad. Asset deterioration is what we're trying to prevent, but that's a sustainability goal as well. So, for 2026, we will be reconstructing Ash Court and Monroe Lane. So, what I wanted to show here with the pictures is the, the picture on the right is Ash Court as a sanset. The picture, the bottom picture, top right is Ash Court as a sanset. Bottom right is Birmingham Road, that was reconstructed earlier this year. Birmingham looked like Ash Court six months ago.
Yeah, yes. Some people in Birmingham are clapping saying, finally. We always have, I call it on our 10-year horizon, but 10 years ago, it was on our 10-year horizon. Today, it's still on our 10-year horizon. Getting, reducing the number of roads that are rural standards, such as College Avenue, East College, such as Walmart, and then, you know, putting in sewer and whatever. I'd like to talk about how the traffic is not sustainable. The traffic doesn't sustain putting in $20 million. On the other hand, eventually, we need to get from rural standards to urban standards. So, if we could actually, you know, in 20 years, to, 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 that goal, it would be great. But where does, let's say, East College and East Walmart stand?
That's a great question. So, a couple of years ago, we were kind of in this in-between, both of them needing maintenance repaved. So, we went ahead and repaved them to give us 10 to 12 years because we believe that we'll need it to get a grants, like the OPWC funds. I mean, it's a, so Walmart would be from Walmart Ridge to, to basically Hempstead, pretty long run there. We see that as being, becoming a potential for a three-lane road, to continuing on from what you get from Hempstead to Sunbury. But yeah, it's a substantial investment. So, we decide, the, the goal was, let's get new pavement down, get it paved. That will buy us 10 to 12 years so we can start designing and hopefully be able to use outside funding source to help pay for those.
Well, you get the bullseye. The bullseye being, we got to await some grant funds because this is double-digit millions.
Correct, correct. So, it's funny, as we're talking about uncurved road scene, so we have Monroe Lane on there. So, Monroe Lane is, it's a, it's currently uncurbed. So, that, that's one of our reconstructs that we're proposing for 2026. The other, this will be because of the size of the project and the timeline required for the project. Vine Street, this is reconstructed from Park Street to East Home Street. Full reconstruct, new sidewalks, new storm sewer. We're actually, service, we'll be talking about this later, but we're coordinating funds with new water main, sanitary sewer lining. Obviously, if we're going to reconstruct this, we don't want, we need the utilities to be in good shape as well. So, this project was so large, it'll be a standalone project, and we didn't include it. There's also the fun side of, there's a school adjacent to it, so it's got to be done in about two months, so June and July.
Ooh, what's the rating on Vine Street North of that?
So, the next section, we will be repaving here shortly. And then I'd have to go and look.
I don't actually want the rating, I was trying to be polite about it.
Yes, that is, that is on our list, that should hopefully be paved here within the month. So, we talked earlier about the corridor studies, and one of them was the Sunbury corridor study. This kind of came up in somewhat due to all of the developments happening around us. So, one of the things that we found was an increase in traffic on Sunbury Road results in the need for additional turn lanes at Central College. This would be a northbound left-right, so if you're going northbound, it gives you a D cell lane to turn onto Central College and a additional southbound left. So, right now, if you're going southbound, you're trying to turn onto Central College, there's, there's one turn lane, we'd be adding a second turn lane to help get traffic through. Also, this will be able to provide for future bike path connection to the Village of Central College, further down on Central College. This is a really good candidate for outside funding. So, we're under design right now. The next stage will be, once the design's completed, we'll be looking in 2028 for utility relocations and right-of-way acquisition that's likely needed with this, and with the 2029 construction. That also gives us time to go to OPWC and ask for one of those ones that Matt brought up earlier. That is a huge benefit to us. It also gives us time for the, if the adjacent development on Sunbury Road happens, to build, potentially use TIP funds. I know we talked to general capital, right now, we're thinking general capital, but there's a potential use of TIP funds in the future.
What's tipped over there?
So, right now, we're looking at expanding the TIP district that would be, that's currently over the Mato and Main Homes developments right there. If we expand the TIP, we could be able to use some of those funds to help with this project.
Our next project, Uptown Parking Lot Reconstruction, this is a parking lot. Hold for applause. Between West College, West College and West Main. So, this was the same picture we showed last year. We are under design right now, conceptually, in the ballpark here. So, our intent is to provide a design that's consistent with the City Hall parking lot. So, if you look at this, you'll see a brick aisle connecting.
Oh, that'll be nice.
College and Main, entry features, new dumpster enclosure. You can kind of see it there on that corner. And new islands and landscaping where possible. Also, looking to underground overhead facilities, improving drainage in the area. And the intent, and what we're looking at right now is to have at least equal public parking spaces that are there, that at least, we think we can get more. So, that is being designed now for 2026 construction. This one, I should clarify that this one does have an expense as well. So, there's some, outside of general capital, there's some stormwater money, some electric money that will be discussed.
A question for you.
Yes.
When this project is happening, are we going to have more parking back at City Hall? Okay.
We will put a restriction on this project that says you can't start essentially until the parking lot's back open.
Perfect.
I was really pleased with you, the landscaping that you're going to be putting in behind CRC and, yeah. And so, so I hope that you'll do the same for this.
Correct, that would be the idea, to mimic that. So, I, I put this slide up, it kind of dovetails into the Uptown Parking Lot. So, this is fire suppression. So, really what I want to do would show, top right, this is what it was, this is Handby Alley. That wasn't technically ours, we acquired it. And then, that's essentially, it was a gravel lot before. And the picture to the right on the bottom is what it is today. Landscaping is not completed, landscaping will be completed later this month, but we're really proud of. That was an in-house, we designed that in-house, we're really proud of how it, how it turned out. So, why I want to talk about this was because from the last project, we are, we, that project will also include funds for fire suppression. So, we'll be running the fire suppression in that block while it's being reconstructed, as well as the block six behind where Mortgage Treasurer used to be and Uptown Delia and Brew. And that'll be the last block. So, over the three years, 24, 25, 26, we'll have completed the Uptown Fire Suppression goal as part of the authentic and live Uptown. This was mentioned earlier, but the Brooks Edge Mobility Project, $3.4 million across multiple years. This is part of our continued investment in the Brooks Edge area. If you've been down there, earlier this year, we reconstructed Heatherdown. We paved the rest of Heatherdown. In years past, we've paved Brooks Edge Boulevard, Park Meadow, Green Crest. In 2024, we did, you can see a bubble there that was space 1A, we had to break it up because of funding issues. You may recall last year, we talked about a funding source of a million dollars through a federal grant. After the election, that grant kind of went away, so we're not able to utilize that. However, that was a million dollars, great, that would have been fantastic. At the same time, Cota passed their initiative. That allowed for them to have the Transit Supportive Infrastructure Grant. We applied for that grant, and we got $2.9 million. That fully funds this project, all the remaining phases. So.
Just to then remember.
2.9 million. So, we are thankful for the team's effort for applying for the grant and for Cota for, like, this provides connection to Cota bus stops. It also provides a missing connection, shared use path that connects Allen Creek Trail with Ohio to Erie Trail, those are two of our larger trails through the city. And it helps meet our mobility plan. So, project we're really excited about, there'll be some more discussions in the near future. But right now, it's looking like a 2026 project.
You're enabling this. I'm hoping sometime in the future that we could reimagine Brooks Edge, we could reimagine Eastwood, we could reimagine the Gill property. Reimagining means, eventually, we're going to probably have to consolidate a few properties and reimagine what that is. Because there's a lot of, I'll call it one-story walk-ins rather than the 800 Brooks Edge, which is a big property. This, this property is so pristine back there. It's a great amenity for some large user, right, Rachel?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. We might change this slide. Another project came out of one of our, our corridor studies. This was the Westard Traffic Impact Study, or Westard Area Traffic Impact Study. This is Cleveland and County Line. During peak hours, if you driven through it, the level of service drops. So, the study showed that a northbound right drop turn lane that you see there, and an eastbound county line drop turn lane will help. There's a tremendous amount of traffic that makes that turn movement. So, that will help with the level of service in the area during peak hours.
When you say level of service, you just mean getting people through, is that what you?
Exactly, so, again, back to the engineering term. So, it's an A through F scale, A being good, F being bad. So, not only are they looking at. not only are they looking at it for peak hours, they're looking at it through the day. So for most of the day, this intersection works well. It's just during peak hours. So with these improvements, as well as replacing, the signals have reached their, end of their useful life. So we'd be replacing the signals as well and upgrading the ADA compliant ramps.
Okay, so just clarifying, we're adding essentially more pavement, it's not a brick speed, okay.
Correct.
Okay, and so are we going to have to move the bike paths, is that what that little?
Yes. Yep. And that will be, as I mentioned earlier about coordinating park or coordinating other divisions, so we'd be coordinating parks on that. Design is scheduled for 2026 with a 2027 construction. All right, my last slide, I promise. So these are smaller projects, but extremely important projects. So pedestrian and bicycle crossing, we, we put a hundred thousand each year, so over the five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars to help meet our Safe and Vibrant Neighborhoods, our mobility goals. And these are our pedestrian and bike crossings. Funds that we use for that were to improve the, basically make a compliant sidewalk. We had to put in an retaining wall to be able to do so, but those funds were able to make that compliant sidewalk to get to the crossing, an existing crossing. The other, if you can see the bottom left, that's actually outside of our office, that's the Ohio to Erie Trail Crossing at Walnut. Those are, we added RFBs there. So RFB, Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon, sorry. So those are the ones you run up, you push the button, it starts flashing to alert traffic. Dave and I talk about this all the time, that everybody, everybody loves those, those push-button crossings. But we have to be very strategic and thoughtful about where we put those. So they, per the Federal Highway Administration, some of those can be 98% effective at getting cars to yield in the right location, the right place. They also state that overuse of, overuse of RFB treatment may diminish their effectiveness. So you think about, you see them all the time, you become almost snow blind to them, you all flashing lights again. And so we want to be very thoughtful about that. So the other item, and you may have seen these, start to go in the school flash, school zone flasher replacements. So the next year, 2026, will be our last year for that program. We started putting them in earlier this year. This is part of our Safe and Vibrant Neighborhoods, improving visibility in school zones and just replacing some aging infrastructure. So if you guys have seen the ones that have gone in this year, you, as you drive up to it, if you're going too fast, it starts slowing down, slowing down. And then it starts reading your speed. And you can see the effect as cars pull up, you see the brake lights. So the reason, we're on our third year of this, but we just got the first round of schools done. The polls, for whatever reason, are a year lead time. It's finally starting to come down and we're seeing some improvements in that. But we're hoping that the next round comes in here this year, maybe get them installed this year, maybe next spring. But that is one of our goals and then next year, we'll finish it up. So one of the other great things about these is it's providing us data, so it's giving us traffic counts, it's giving us traffic speeds. So we, we can log into the system, look and see if really, if any changes need to be made, so data-driven decisions.
The flasher thing is doing that?
Correct.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Is that on the hub?
That's not on the hub, no. One of the other things that these, and this is one of, maybe Monica's favorite, one of Monica's favorite things about, is on, we can control them remotely. So when you think of calamity days, we can just go in, I, I looked at the program, you can just go in and say, oh, and they all turn off.
Neat.
So there's a, outside of the, the, the safety improvements from it, it also gives us some other advantages as well.
I just want to give you props, because the top one was like just a little pet project tune, name of it. My kids really like it, my runners, but they say it's more boring now.
Yes, I want to comment on that as well before we move on, it's so beautiful, so beautiful, thank you, we love it.
And the Walnut Crosswalk is getting a ton of use for people going to the market. For everybody that's parking at 60 Core and Whittier, it's like crazy usage on Saturday mornings.
Yeah. Yeah, so Dave reminded me that we really wanted to, that was another in-house design. I can't say enough about my team. But we wanted to get that done this year because we wanted it done because, as Parks will be talking about later, Walnut Ridge Park is going to be done. So we wanted to have it done before that. So yeah.
Just I'm not recommending anything or suggesting anything, all I'm saying is, as Eastham Avenue develops, watch Northwest Street going southbound. Yeah, because that's going to be impacted. We need to deter through traffic on that. The other thing is, Matt, just how I think, okay? What wasn't here, but what is here, curbs. Sometimes we, we waited until the street was redone to the, to dirt, you know, to replace the curbs. And it was well before your era, Mr. Eflin, before your era. I was doing the math thing, do you think a curb lasts more than 200 years? Because that's what we're, that's what the life is, that you're spending on it. But right now, we cut them out if there's a curb before we do the street, so that we maintain the usefulness of curb. Which curb is not only aesthetic, it's also for storm flow and things like that. So it's a, anyway, that's how I think from a budgeting perspective. End of life is not 200 years, at best it's a hundred years. And maybe it's 50 in that. Anyway, Northwest Street would be one. The other area, I think, to look out for is Granby and Waterton. As Metzger Park changes, that intersection is a through intersection rather than a three-way or four-way. I don't know what the accident count is, but I've seen some close calls.
Close calls of people coming off of Waterton?
Yeah.
Is that at the park entrance?
Yeah, it's at the park entrance.
Is, was that, is that recent? I, we made some no parking changes there, so I was curious if that?
No, it's not recent.
Okay.
No, no, it's not the last three weeks.
Yeah.
Maybe the last three years.
Okay.
As well as recent to look at the Tommy's House.
Any questions for community and development on their proposed projects? Okay, great.
I was looking for, I was looking for sewers and really nice pictures of those things.
Well, Grant will bring that, isn't he?
I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks guys.
All right, the next presentation is Parks and Recreation, we'll have Acting Director, interim director, JR Orsby. I think he's going to make, are you guys going to open it for us? All right.
Yes, of course, your hand. So JR, you're totally helping me, yeah?
All the time and all things, yes. Good morning, all. As Monica mentioned, have Laura Ball and Matt Hallery to keep me on track when I start doing that thing that I do and answer most of the technical questions, if there are any. So Westerville is a city within a park. We're currently still looking on selecting a vendor to help us with our Pro's Plan. But as we look through our CIP projects, we want to make sure that we are still addressing the current Pro's Plan and City Council Strategic Outcomes, High Quality of Life. And I think if we look at this, the, the theme that you will see is the reinvestment in the system. So a lot of projects to reserve, some, some amazing amenities that we have. Not a lot of building new things, but again, just taking care of the things, the assets that we already have. And as we talked about collaboration and partnerships, Nate and Mr. Eflin were so kind to let us talk about Walnut Ridge Park. So I really appreciate that from them. So this is our first one, our first project up. As we all remember back in 1968, the Walnut Ridge Run was straightened before the city took possession of this park. And so what we have here is essentially a park that really hasn't been touched since 1971. So what our proposal is, is to realign and create wetlands with the stream. And so that way it allows us to, again, have some management of the stormwater and the runoff that's going into Walnut Street there. And also preserve the park amenities that are within there that are being damaged when the park begins to flood. So we had some public engagement on this, went to planning commission. So again, the redesign would feature boardwalks, trails, ball fields. And then you can see there that we would like to bid the project in spring and then begin construction. That's a $3 million shared cost between Parks and Recreation and planning and development. Next one here, we have the Allen Creek South Park. This park has become immensely popular with the addition of the BMX track, the Thomas J Knox rink. So with all of that extra traffic and usage over there, we've been evaluating and we are going to look at constructing a permanent restroom on the site there, so folks can avoid the porta potties.
That is. And then one single porta potty.
One single porta potty. That really gets that community engagement, everyone using the one porta potty. This is when you guys are supposed to stop me, I'm doing that. So looking at, just again, really trying to add service to that area. Again, engineering design in '26 and then construction in '27. Looking at about $600 plus thousand to add a restroom on site there.
Where's it going to go? Or do you not?
Able to location near the parking lot porta potty, so it doesn't become territorial.
Sweet.
Can I make a little comment after this here, so no panic? But the BMX track there, the BMX guy was putting a bug in my ear. Some improvements, definitely make that more sustainable long-term, that would be interesting to see, explore that.
Absolutely. And they bring in a lot of folks to the community and so yeah, absolutely, take a look at that. Thank you for that. Right. Again, getting to talk about how great the team is here. This is reconstruction of the Ohio to Erie Trail. And Laura here in collaboration with not only our team, but across the city. Laura rose a couple grants here to ODOT for the special solicitation. And this will be completely funded to a total of $2.2 million through grant funds.
That's awesome.
Fantastic work. Yeah. So we will begin doing all of these constructions, reconstructions of the trail, making sure that we have flashing beacons. Is there anything that you want, specifically to mention?
Okay. Fantastic.
So again, fully funded project there.
If you had, if, the picture of this is, I think, really, that's cool too, but it was really impactful because it's a really huge stretch of the trail. Like that, this is a huge project that you got paid for.
Oh, yeah, this, this grant takes care of like 95% of the Ohio to Erie Trail. We only have the small section around between Electric and then Sharp Road. And obviously, engineering, bringing that Brooks Edge Shared Use Trail in will help tremendously with the alignment coming into the city. So we, very small section left to do.
Next project, before I get into this one, we have some bingo squares in the back, so I just want to, I've talked about a few projects. Anything, construction-wise or trails, it's Nate's fault. So you guys can mark your bingo cards in the back there. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, stop. Really interesting project here would be Ever Barn. Ever Barn is such a huge part of our, our history and our heritage here in Westerville. And the chair's not here, but I know that he personally moved the barn. And located its current location. I think he built it. So
Anyone got bingo with that one?
So what we have with the barn, if you've been in the barn, you have probably noticed that it feels like all of Cleveland Avenue is joining you. You can hear everything and through some very select boards in the walls, you can actually see all of Cleveland Avenue. And so what we have here is a need to preserve the barn because as we've added in HVAC and we've done all the temperature controls, we're actually damaging the barn and I'm not sure how long it would be able to last without doing this project. So what we have here is insulation. We're going to encase the barn with this insulation and new slats. And then we're going to upgrade the mechanical systems. And then while we're in there, we're also going to bring up the restrooms to ADA standards. And all of that, A, we're in here, we might as well do a light interior refresh to make sure that barn stays vibrant. So we're essentially encapsulating the existing barn that Mike built. So we've had a few public meetings, we got another one September 23rd, you guys are failing me.
It's not my fault.
We have another engagement for folks to come and see what the barn will look like when it is finished, the proposals, proposals, excuse me. That would be September 23rd here at the Community Center. So we'll do that next public meeting, then we will bid the project very early in the winter and then enter into construction in 2026. We've already connected with a lot of our community partners who rely on the barn to host events. So we've got blocked out that year in anticipation. And they are making plans and adjusting their schedules if this were to end up in the budget.
So with where I am insulation, what's it going to look like on the inside, like is it going to be?
It's still going to be, yeah, so it's still going to look like a barn. It will be, if you want, if you want to talk about it. Fantastic, she doesn't want to talk about it. So it will, so it will look, we're going to try to match that as a different color scheme. So it'll end up being mostly white on the interior, just because of what we have to use to put the insulation in. We're going to add some non-gymnasium lights to the ceiling there. So we'll actually have a little bit more vibrant atmosphere when we go up. So really making it, again, preserving what is there, because that's not going away. The existing barn will still be there, but we're just going to modernize it, bring it up a little bit, elevate that so we can continue running it out for the community.
So the outside's going to look similar, but the inside's going to have like new wood stuff in between?
Yeah, so what we are, what we're doing is we're insulating from the outside. So we are going to remove the purlins from the outside of the barn, those are the raised strips that go down the barn siding. Wrap the barn, put in new windows, put in braces, put the insulation on, then put salvage barn siding back on and put those purlins back on, so it should match, it'll just have a thicker profile. And they're, they're making that up at the roofline where you won't be able to tell. So this siding on the inside is going to be the same, it's, it's our original siding that you'll see on the inside. We're going to take the opportunity to wash this from the inside, because it hasn't been washed.
Well, that sounds good, that's it. Okay, one more thing, so bathrooms, we're going to have changing tables in the men's room of the bathrooms, maybe? And Allen Creek?
Yeah, we'll take some of that in there.
You're talking about it, you know?
Absolutely.
Wonderful, thank you.
Do, aside from like the regular updates to like rates, we don't anticipate that this is going to impact what we would charge to rent the space, right?
No, but I do not anticipate that would, other than our normal evaluation of rental rates. But doing this project will not say, oh man, we got it. Hopefully what it will do is actually increase the amount of time that the barn is rented. As we make it a little more aesthetically pleasing on the inside.
How much vary the rest of the park will lose, close up, or are the works going?
Uh, we are just gonna close immediately around the barn. There will be fencing similar to what's done at City Hall, going around the barn and we're looking at having a staging area behind the barn in between barn and Cleveland Avenue.
And it's summer of twenty-six?
It will start in March and go through the end of the year. Just while we've been working with the community partners.
We're gonna have to do something with the chambers then?
So.
Yes, but are you, are you gonna like add porta potties there during the musical arts festival?
Yes, so all of that's being coordinated.
Yeah, Jeff's in charge. I mean, I do, what's the future of the homestead? Is that gonna be gutted and redone, made offices, or what's the future of the homestead?
No, I don't think that I can decide that here today for you, but I think what we would, with all of this stuff with the pros plan coming up, I think that's an opportunity to, to listen about some of these spaces that we have. But are there plans to gut it and make it office spaces? No, the, the plan is the homestead will remain untouched. And then we'll do our community listening and figure out if there's a future need for that space to turn into something else. But no plans currently to touch anything with that.
Okay, so everyone remembers this, okay? The gas station on the corner of Heritage Park is actually a listing in the TIF fund. If it ever becomes available to, for sale, it could be made part of Heritage Park. Just put that out there, again, twenty-five years from now, when Grimes is still on council. Just remember that.
And then we get into the capital bumper, the annual maintenance. So we've got Millstone Park, North Parking Lot, Highlands Park, the South Parking Lot, the Entry Drive into Highlands. And then we have again our annual maintenance with our sports courts resurfacing over here at the Sports Complex and the Hoffwood Pickleball Courts.
Is this, are you only talking about the parking lot or Millstone because we've already, we're already set with the whole redo? We've already done, we've already moved that or?
I'm sorry.
Are we redoing Millstone or going something else?
We are, so then, yes, Nate and his team have graciously offered to come over and do the rest of the parking lot. So we will be handling the park side of that and then the resurfacing of that lot will be the team back in the back there.
You add resurfacing to the street maintenance? It's not separate, anything in the big process?
It all goes in contract A. Some of the outline years in twenty-seven through thirty, we've got again the parking lots, trail rehab, excuse me, five hundred thousand per year, sports courts, resurfacing. And then some playgrounds that are coming up inside will need to be redone. You've got Huber Village, then Hoffwoods, and then Cannon Main Park. And then also outline years, we have the Mariners Cove Boardwalk, slot in there for a hundred thirty thousand.
Like the scoreboard on the ice?
So the boardwalk there at Mariners Cove runs off of Wade Drive. It just goes back into the wood into that wetland area. This is one we put on there, but we're not sure if we're gonna, there's some other bridges, a lot of boardwalks at Highlands Park Center, especially out in the wetlands. So we may need to move those lines, grasses now, it's where we got target.
The one at Walnut Ridge, is there one at Walnut, right Walnut Ridge Park along the bike trail? It's really, really slippery when it's wet.
We're gonna be addressing that during the construction.
The Mariners Cove was on planning commission back in the eighteen hundreds. When we put that in and it's basically a lot of wetlands there. Also, there's a connection to the equine area that we need to eventually make. So that's a work in progress. But anytime it rains, the streets become rivers and it's deliberate. People didn't understand that, but Mariners Cove is built on a swamp.
JR, I was super excited to see that the front of the side entrance there is gonna be marked off for any kind of marking.
That was all of us and the planning and development had absolutely. Yeah, it's any bonus points I can talk. With that, any questions on anything that we covered there? And as a little bit of a teaser, I think I get to come back up here at the end, so I'll leave you with a little bit of suspense to talk about one more project we have at the end, but.
Well, we'll adjourn early.
All right, everyone enjoying the morning so far?
Yes.
Well, now we got to push.
All right, so Chairman, what do we do differently with enterprise funds than what we do with general capital impermit funds? So unlike the early morning session, we're going to dive into capital permits for utilities. So we'll be talking about electric, public service, and water, which means we'll be covering waters, stand here sewers, storm sewer, road maintenance, refuse man, electricity. At the end of the presentations, we will also share other projects that have potential capital improvements. Staff will provide information and recommendations for council consideration on a couple of these special funds and projects that are currently in play and built. All right, so these are revenue funds that we're gonna talk about. Electric is a true enterprise fund, which means the cost to serve the customer is fairly and adequately distributed among the different classes. Water is also under this model. Sewer's a little bit different in that it is an enterprise fund, but we do not do the treatment. We only control the maintenance and repair of the underground system. So Columbus sends us their treatment costs and then we add on the cost to serve the actual system. And then that goes into the cost to serve our customers. The road maintenance fund receives a majority of its revenue from gas tax and motor vehicle tax. Oh, no.
I knew it. Is that from the, is that given to us from the state or is that taxed?
So the gas tax is the tax you pay. And then it gets distributed to us through a percentage. And the motor vehicle tax is at the Department of Motor Vehicles when you redo your registration and license plates. And then we give a portion of that to also do road maintenance.
To the state then? And what percentage is that, sorry?
Oh, man, you're really pulling the question.
Oh, sorry.
Three point two seven.
Yeah, we don't have it readily available, but we can get that to you.
Probably not, no.
So roughly about two point three million dollars annually comes in from both of those tax funds into our road maintenance. And then we do transfer some general funds over to cover the rest of the cost. So I would say two-thirds of our road maintenance are covered by gas tax and motor vehicle tax, and then about one-third is recruited from the general fund. So the data clearing that we weren't talking about today, some of that money gets transferred over to supplement and assess in the road maintenance program. Can't blame everyone for not understanding. Okay. All right, so right now our storm water fund is actually funded through income tax, through the general fund. And we'll look at creating a standalone utility fund in storm water in the future, but right now it is a hundred percent general fund. All right, so I share all this just to reset our revenue conversation that we talked about earlier. While the majority of the projects earlier this morning were covered by general fund and therefore covered by income tax, this section is, has so many different revenue sources. And the main sources of revenue come through either your, your utility bill, your gas pump, or the Department of Motor Vehicles. Again, all the projects are aligned with council strategic plan, excellent comprehensive services state that we need while planning and maintaining infrastructure, authentic and alive, we're maintaining through our parking lots and also the fire suppression lines. And transformational leadership is that we're future planning, embracing change with a collective impact, and telling our story. So I move this slide up from this morning to now also to share that our debt and financing policy is the same for our general fund and for our utility funds. We do try to do cash first, pay as you go, and go down the same schedule as you see here. The biggest difference, I would say, between general fund and utility funds, most of the projects in utilities last thirty, forty, fifty, somehow to a hundred years. And so it actually makes a lot of sense to debt some of those things out because the asset itself lasts that long. So if it lasts more than twenty years, the consideration of debting it out is actually a pretty responsible and reasonable thing to do. So that the people who are using that asset for the next twenty years help pay for that asset for the next twenty years. That said, we still try to pay with cash first because that is our debt policy. Any questions on that before we jump into the actual process? Great, then I will hand it off to Chris and he can share his chapter of the story.
Thanks, Mark, I appreciate it. And of course, I'm excited to talk about some of the cool things we're working on and have to be like. I just want, do you wanna emphasize, of course, that our role and commitment to the council's strategic plan is there. There are threats that we throughout all of the strategic initiatives, but when you think about us, the electric division, utility as a whole, you really put a lot of emphasis on that smart, reliable, and affordable utilities. Those are the things that really drive us at the electric division, and you'll see elements of that throughout this capital plan. So first up on our list is distribution automation. If you've been here through several of the past years, this, this project has showed up and it will continue to show up for, for quite some time now. But I do wanna spend a little bit of time kind of talking about exactly what this project means, because this is really transformational for us at the electric division. We talk about smart and reliable utilities, this project is really what's gonna set the foundation for that for the next ten, twenty, thirty years. So what exactly is a distribution automation system? Right, so when we think about an outage as it happens today, we're really, really proud of the fact that we're ninety-nine point nine, nine percent reliable. We measure our outage time in, in minutes. That is a really prideful thing for us at the electric division. But that doesn't mean we're, we're stopping there because we think we can do better. Right now, when an outage happens, when, when a fault occurs, when something disrupts the electric system, the distribution system of the electric division and causes an outage, it requires human intervention. So that means we get notification of the outage. A truck rolls at the electric division, the operations team immediately reacts and responds to try to figure out what happened. And what we're doing there is trying to figure out how and what is, are the next steps to restore that outage. So we've gotta get information, we've gotta put eyes on it, we've gotta see, was it a tree branch, was it an animal? That, that information is valuable for the operations team who's making decisions on how to minimize that outage as quickly as possible. So they're always thinking about, is it quicker for us just to fix the problem and turn everybody's power on? Is it quicker for us to then minimize that outage to affect just a few customers and disperse our resources to a different area to fix this thing? Only to, or shorten the outage for some, but lengthen the outage for others. So those are the decisions that an operations engineer has to make during an outage. Well, distribution automation, the goal of that program is actually to, to make those decisions without human intervention. So what your real goal when you, when you have a system like this fully deployed across the city is that instantaneously, when one of those faults occurs, the outage actually shrinks to the, the smallest amount that it can. So if a tree branch falls on a line and in our old setup would knock the whole system out, the whole circuit might affect a thousand customers. What distribution automation does is that that tree branch faulted here, we know it can still feed from here to here, now we've only got ten customers, not seven thousand. That happens in milliseconds. So that's the end goal when we talk about distribution automation. That's what's gonna really actually take our outage times down even further and, and better for our customers. So that's that real, that big emphasis on reliability. So what actually is a distribution automation system? It's actually many different things across our system. So there's physical assets, there's technology that supports it, and then there's the human, the human piece of it too. When we look at the, the plan that we've got in place for distribution automation, it is across ten years, it's a ten-plus year project. Very significant investment, it involves fiber connectivity, switches, because it has to have that very, very high-speed data. Reclosers, that's kind of what you're seeing in this image, that's the overhead portion of the project, that sits on, above ground. And then we're talking about new pad mount switch gear that, that can handle this, this bit of information, this high-speed switching. And then again, we're gonna put electric and capital relates in that system. So annually, when we commit this six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what are we getting out of that system? That's annually, we're looking to deploy six reclosers, so think about that overhead component of the, of the system, two pad mount switches, all of the equipment, so that might be fiber, physical fiber, switch gear and, and other equipment associated with that. And that's underground conduit and fiber, and that will be until fully deployed. The key, one of the key elements to a distribution automation system is actually in process this year. And that's coming forward in the, in the form of a SCADA replacement. So the SCADA is really the intelligence gathering piece of the equation, so that's what pulls all that data back. And so we're actually finishing up an RFP and actually be bringing forward a recommendation to see council here in October to, to really set the foundation for this project. So you're gonna really start to see a lot of the, the elements of distribution automation come into focus here over the next few years as we deploy the system out. So how do we pick locations for this? Because it isn't, we're doing it over ten to twelve years, we can't just do it for the whole system right away. Unfortunately, we do it a couple of ways. We look at opportunistic improvements. So this type of a project affects everybody across the electric division, we've all gotta be, whether you're in engineering group, operations in line, and even our warehouse and purchasing teams all have to be thinking about this, and it's gotta be fundamental in how we plan. So when we think about opportunistic, if we're replacing a hole, if the hole is just damaged, let's put the right size hole in. Let's think about the location of the overhead reclosers when we're doing that, those standard replacements. But then we also look at past circuit performance. We look at proximity to existing fiber, because we do have a fiber backbone across the city, but there are areas where it's closer to that fiber network, making it easier to make those connections. And then we look at those key connection points that our switches offer between substations. Because we, when you think about backfeeding and feeding circuits differently, you want a switch at a key location that enables you to make good decisions that positively affect most. And of course, we're looking at the highest customer impact we can make as we deploy the system.
There are, there's technology at the feeder breaker level that are like iPad-like costs. Phaser measurement units that you could actually look at the three phases, look at the balance, and you could actually see intermittent issues. The intermittent issues will tell you exactly that a tree branch is actually touching the line before. The intermittent issues will tell you exactly that a tree branch is actually touching the line before it takes it out. You can cut out that. It'll tell you which phase the fuse is blown. It'll tell you which transformer. But take a look at what could be done at the feeder breaker level in the substation that could look out to each circuit to determine visibility as part of your SCADA to bring it back. And it doesn't need eyeballs. It could be, you can use AI to determine that, hey, phase A on circuit breaker 13, on pole number, it will tell you. So it's not that expensive. At 65,000, 650,000 will probably be something, you owe less than 50. So it's just a way to look at it.
Thanks, appreciate that.
Yes?
Is the fiber that we're going to install, right, to do for this initiative? In this scenario, in this budget, we do, that includes the cost to make the connection from the backbone to the electric division asset in our budget.
Okay, so will it be dedicated strictly to this or?
Great question. So as an example, the first phase of this kind of deployment is actually under construction now. It's actually in the Lanes Loop area. So that area itself, we identified as we had two switches that were installed before Lanes Loop was built. And now they're very difficult to access and they've been sitting in that Lanes Loop area that we talked about a year or years ago. So they're aging and need to replace. So part of that project, actually, we did bring communication kind of all the way through that project and past many houses. And we built it to a standard that we can have good access in the future.
I think, I'm not sure this is the electric division, but just to put it out there. Pole attachments are becoming much more obsessive, to the point where people, the team officials and whatnot, they actually do loops. But sometimes the pole attachments drop, the telecom. The electric stuff on the top is beautiful. It's really the stuff in the middle that's ugly. I'll give you an example on, if you're going eastbound on West Main on Cleveland, the pole attachment across actually blocks one of the lights. Okay, it's so thick. Then you go around the roundabout near Orion and almost every three months, the telecom is down where you can actually reach it from a bicycle. The same on West Street, the telecom is down, you can reach it from a bicycle. It's not, it's not electrical. You're not going to get zapped. But if you're on a bike and this thing is low, you're going to get clothes on. So someone needs to own all of this infrastructure to be able to tell AT&amp;T, whomever, that there's a problem.
I would agree that the pole attaches are becoming increasingly difficult and popular because there are new telecom suppliers that are interested in attaching the poles. So it is, it is an issue. However, at least attempting to mitigate it in the near term is, we used to use maybe 35-foot holes in some certain areas. No longer are we using 35s, we'll put 40 and 45s because there needs to be more space. You need to have the proper NDS spacing to make sure the electrical hasn't made contact. So it doesn't solve the issue of the legacy things. It is recognized as an issue.
Well, the irritant is, we can give Nate some lopping shoes.
Well, we actually did that a long ago when there was actually a truck that caught an AT&amp;T wire alongside very discreetly.
Objection, so to speak. I know you own the streetlights. Nate owns the traffic lights. This infrastructure.
We don't own our poles.
Is that what, the poles are not?
Yeah, we do, we own them. So the attachment agreement is with the electric division. The laws and rules to enforce some of these issues are challenging, time consuming, and complex. So it isn't just as simple as everybody's favorite response is, why don't you just, you know, when they're out of, just go cut the wire? That's not exactly how it works. So recognizing this is a very complex issue to kind of beautify and get the overall infrastructure aligned.
So that's why I have like crap wrapped around the thing. That's my, that's right.
It's not, it's not our electric division.
If you go up West Main, going toward Northwest Street, the telecom is being held up by the trees. That's how critical this is, it is.
Okay, so another project that is indirectly aligned with our distribution automation project, important. So is our switchgear replacement project. And outcome of our COVID was that switches, A, became a lot more expensive and the lead times were significantly, year-over-year, significantly shortened. And when you look at our network of switches we've got across the city, you start to see some age on some of those. You can kind of see that in the top image. Over time, these are generally near roadways, so you get some stall points there, they start to age and the aprons break down. And we're beginning to invest and plan for that over 20 years to replace all those switches. So we're investing a million dollars a year. That gets us about four switches annually. These are new die-electrically insulated switches as opposed to oil-filled. So these are built for the long term, they're distribution automation compatible. We got our first batch of these in this year and we're ready to begin deploying those. As we pull the old ones, which is in, we'll of course evaluate them. If we can hold them and then order or replace and repair, we will. If not, we will recycle and ship those out. Again, commitment to reliability is our redoing of underground cable annually. So we are seeking a $750,000 budget and we start to see some increases in that. Year-over-year, what we're finding is this is becoming increasingly more expensive. We're getting less footage replaced every year, so we want to kind of start to build that budget. But at its core, this program is exactly what it sounds like. It's a reinvestment in our underground system. So we seek and find aging, either it's end of useful life, it's direct buried. We start to see some faults. We kind of rank the circuits and select some strategic areas. We also emphasize the alignment with our distribution automation planning in these programs. So we continue to reinvest in that system and it really does show in our outage statistics. Everybody loves underground cable and you don't have to see the pole attachments and everything. But it is more challenging when there's an outage underground. It takes more time to find the outage or find the fault and repair. So we're getting ahead of that and reinvesting.
If there's a possibility to, I know what you're connecting these to. Some of the things you're connecting in the backyards are rusted. Eventually, you have to apply paint to it. I know structurally they're still sound, but they're pretty, they're eyesore.
What are you saying? Is that us thing or the property people?
They would be the pedestals, transformers. They start to age, similar to the.
It's totally electric division.
Isn't that, it would be our asset, okay. We also, in next year's budget, are including a request to build a new circuit out of substation number one. So if you recall, back in 2020, and it was completed in, I believe, 21, we redid substation one, added increased capacity with anticipation that we would need additional circuits served out of that substation. And this will be the first attempt to do that. This really gets us additional capacity where we need it. So this is the south end of town. As that's built out, we're hitting the point where we need to build some additional capacity out there to ensure that we can continue our reliable service. Another just example of a project that's helping to scale and even more, it's this idea that facilities are becoming more energy dense. And the example here is that Walmart is actually planning to put in significant DC fast charging infrastructure at their facility. And so with that, we were about at our max and we start to add more things and redevelopment occurs. That tells us we need to add some additional classes, which will be a new circuit that.
For cars?
For cars, yes.
Well, that's cool.
Yeah, it's a pretty exciting project. There will be a pretty significant DC fast charging infrastructure at that facility.
Right off the highway, very far.
Yeah, DC fast charging is a significant challenge in distribution.
It is.
If it gets to the post office doing it, you'll need a new substation. Because the DC fast charging is very high capacity.
Yeah, the example, I don't quote me 100% on these numbers, but I think that we're looking at around six 300 KW chargers. That's significant as the ones you look at.
How many?
I think it's six. I don't have the same as the final plan, but I think it was a very significant amount of charge.
And they pay our rate?
They would, they would fall into a, whatever rate class is appropriate. And they would pay for that electricity through our rate class. It's very likely, almost certainly, it would be a general service large customer definitely.
And off-peak charging or not?
The way it's structured now, it would not be off-peak because I think the example that we, in the industry haven't figured out yet is how to handle these DC fast chargers. Because you can't exactly turn off the gas pump at certain hours of the day, so if someone needs that charge. So instead, we're recouping those costs through our rates.
Oh, I think I articulated my question wrong. Like if I want to, if I charge my car off-peak, I'm charged at a different rate, right, than.
That's right. If you're in a residential power program at home, you do get a discount on.
And we do not extend that to things like this.
It is not set up yet. We're certainly evaluating freight structures and things to make sure that we can handle these types of loads and make sure we recoup those costs appropriately.
Well, it's Walmart, so not too many people are going to be off-peak doing the charge. But on the other hand, you need to be able to push the button to shut it off. If we get a significant peak, it'd be great to shut it off for 10 minutes so that we could, you know, not get the capacity charges. Just to give an idea of what council is one kilowatt. One kilowatt with respect to a home.
Yeah, we usually save on others through our Nest program, about 1 KW per, what was that? We're talking about 300 KW per charger?
Holy moly, it's significant.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Are we allowed to just turn it off for 10 minutes?
What's that?
Walmart's charger.
Only, only if you have an agreement in place with your terms and conditions regarding the charger itself.
The, the answer directly, no, we don't have, our terms and conditions don't cover that as a sort of. There are different models across the country. There are, what, there's time-based rates, so if you're charging on peak, you might pay significantly more money. So the utilities that may hold for charging more. There are peak load reduction programs, so maybe I'll turn the unit off all the way, but you ratchet it down during those peaks. So there are ways to do it, but I would tell you, when it comes to charging a car, there isn't a silver bullet that is universally been accepted as working to avoid peaks in charging.
So, sorry, we went on a rabbit hole.
That's okay.
So those six chargers would like, like if everybody put their car in, it doesn't matter that I'm doing the Nest program?
It would, it changed our.
It still matters.
Well, right, but it's not, like, it's not going to, oh my goodness.
So it matters, all of it matters.
Yeah.
All of it has an effect. I mean, we have well over 1,000 customers enrolled, so we're saving a megawatt.
Right.
Through our Nest program, which is fantastic, right? But we peak as a utility, I have a lot, 100 megawatts. So to your point, if every car charges for the entire peak at 6,300, that's a, that's a pretty significant chunk. The reality of the way car chargers work is they're generally pulling up for 10 minutes, maybe less on DC fast charger than you're leaving. So it's unlikely to spike your peak for the entire peak period, so it may have an effect, but that makes sense.
What you need is to address the terms and conditions ahead of it. It's not a detriment to charging. It's just that in this narrow window, if you can shut it off for five minutes or at least half of them and rotate it, you still can get the charge, but it's not going to be exactly the same time. But you have to address it with terms and conditions.
Yeah, I think that's really the challenge of it all, right? Is Walmart going to just allow us to turn their charger off for their customer that, in a peak? The ability to predict a peak is getting increasingly difficult because there are more programs for peak shaving. So now what used to be pretty certain that I knew in a two-hour window, we're going to hit a peak. It might now be creeping to three hours and we certainly can't jump on three hours. So it's a, it's a very complicated dynamic solution to that problem. Yeah, that the industry does not solve.
Okay, we could talk about what your SCADA can do to actually get there. Because communities are doing it in the northeast, San Diego. I think it's, it's, just try to stay ahead of it rather than reacting to it. That's what I'm saying.
So the last time we did a cost of service study was a year and a half ago. And in that, we did talk about a DC charging rate and we looked at what that would look like. At this point, to enact that would be pretty complicated and doesn't do a huge difference from being the large customer group that it would end up being in anyways. The issue is the capacity, like the point that they can suck just a ton of energy like that. And so it doesn't matter whether it's a large customer or a DC charging rate. It, the capacity has to be built in. And it is, under the large customer. The terms and conditions as far as putting a DC charging station, we're already behind the eight ball in that. I mean, the fact that Walmart is putting it in right now, we can't change our terms and conditions in this moment. So we're already behind the eight ball when it comes to that piece. They would have to kindly agree and it would be a negotiation. And I highly doubt someone like Walmart, who's doing this across the entire United States, is going to do anything special for us. We can ask. We will ask. We have asked. We'll continue to ask. But I think we're already too late when it comes to Walmart's implementation of DC charging stations.
Okay, or you're at six, maybe seven, eight, nine, 10 would be addressed.
Yes.
So would these be superchargers, like the Tesla chargers, or the ones like they have in back of the city?
These would be the equivalent of a Tesla supercharger. The Tesla brand's DC fast, that supercharger, the rest of the industry calls it DC fast, just stands for direct current. So it's a quicker delivery of energy to the customer. So it's more like a gas station experience as opposed to triple charging.
Yeah.
Triple's not the right word. Level two charging, a little bit slower.
So is updating terms and conditions something we're looking at definitively doing or just talking about? What's the?
Yeah, so we're continuing to look at best options for our community, but as Chris stated, there is no silver bullet. I mean, the states that do the majority of clean energy, the states we would look at for help would be like California, who's done a ton of this stuff. They haven't figured it out yet. And so there just really isn't a good solution. We, the industry itself, never thought that there would be a vehicle that would be sucking a ton of power all in a very quick amount of time. So the entire structure of the industry isn't set up to do that. But that's actually where the highest cost is, is the quick sucking of energy. And so it's figuring out how within the structure and regulations that we have, how can we protect our community and what can we do to get in.
And I'll just point out to you, the way our rates are set up, we're recouping costs when we go in. It's not as if there's a, there's a giant subsidy in this rate class because of these. The general service large will pull in a lot of the costs associated with this. So under, under the correct utilization rate, the rate itself is actually set for it should be. So we're going to recoup those costs and it is in a, it is in a drag on the rest of our customer bases. So I do want to make that point.
Okay.
I think the important thing to remember is that most electric car owners, they get you to a destination, so you're not trying to fill up your car. But the last station is Roadport or somewhere out there. So if you're coming from Cincinnati, from that direction, and it will direct you to here based on how much charge you have left to get them to 36, where the next one, you know, large superstation. So how likely is that to happen that they draw a huge surge in the amount of energy?
We, so I'll point the term utilization rate. So when you put these in right now, it's hard to predict exactly what the utilization rate is. I think if you looked at Tesla's data, the superchargers, they probably get a pretty high utilization rate because they've been there for a while. This will probably ramp up, right? So you'll get cars that'll, that'll come charged. So we might see a 10, 20% utilization rate. So many of those chargers aren't even going to be used during the peak at this, at the early stages. What the future holds as more cars come on, that's when things will start to come into focus.
I think the next step to this is Mid-City Electric decides to go all-electric with their trucks. The US Postal Service goes all-electric with their trucks. All of a sudden, we're getting new school buses with all-electric. Those would be enormous peak demand with respect to our hundred and five megawatts that we have. I'm just saying that we have to have a rate in there, not to discourage, don't get me wrong, but to manage. It's, that is coming. The technology's gonna be there probably within five years.
Yeah, and, and just to make a point, this isn't, I don't want to presume this is like sky's falling at this point. So we do have limitations on our distribution system as well, right? If someone wants to put a charging hub that requires fifty megawatts of load, we can't serve that to them. So that's an important point, too. So if a customer says, oh, we wanna put a charging hub for every US Postal Service vehicle in the greater suburbs region, our answer would be, we can't serve that right now. It's, it's, we don't have fifty megawatts of spare capacity at one location. So it's, it's a, we, we have time to build a plan to put the proper things in place if those, those questions are asked of us. Okay. We can hear the circuit at circuit thirteen, so we're gonna go ahead and move that forward. Another example of a strategic shift is our street lighting program and project. So again, for many years, we have included a request to replace the street lighting. And usually what we do here is we look at some residential poles that have been installed, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, maybe even longer than that, and replace those poles, new wiring, put the wiring conduit, make those investments upgrades, switch the whole LED. We've been doing that for quite some time, and actually, probably about twenty years, we've been putting all of our wiring conduit. We've been, we've got a pretty standard pole across the city. So what we're gonna shift to is a LED, a high-pressure sodium, the LED conversion with our residential post outlets. So if you ever think back to your street, you probably have a, a nice decorative pole with what we call an Arlington fixture on top. It's a nice-looking fixture. For a long time, LED wasn't an option in those, those fixtures. It wasn't providing the right light output, it wasn't consistent. Well, that has changed. And actually, they no longer manufacture high-pressure sodium. So what we're, what's happening is when a light goes out and we have to replace it, we're putting an LED in. So you're getting this checkerboard effect, because the high-pressure sodium looks very different from LED light. High pressure is that orange glow that, you know, that warm LEDs a little bit. We have a nice color temperature, but it's different. And so as you drive down the street, you might see orange, 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 white, orange. So we wanna kind of fix that, we wanna get a more standard field. So we're gonna strategically select locations, remove the high-pressure sodium for the LED, and we're gonna actually use electrician staff to do that part of the, the project.
And in the closest proximity, so we reduce the number of residents impacted, but also ensures that we have available working infrastructure to support, you know, our businesses, our residences, fire suppression, and all the other users of our park. And then lastly, there is the sanitary sewer capacity management operation and maintenance manual, or as we call it, C-MO. This is just basically a framework of maintenance and operation of our sewer system. And so this is a framework that all utilities have, and it helps guide us in some of the steps that we need to take to maintain it and the proper working condition. And then the last policy influence is, you know, really focused on transformational, transformative leadership, and looking at our public service staff and crews that are tasked with maintaining areas. So we're saying we have a utility crew, we have an environmental crew, and we have a street crew. And with all these regulations and all these policies I just touched on, we found some competing priorities, while we also found some efficiencies. And so the utility crew used to maintain water and sewer, environmental crew to perform, and of course, all streets and middle streets. And so combining, combining some of these crews into a dedicated water crew, a dedicated sewer crew, allows us to open up some additional efficiencies and, and help to clear out some of these competing priorities with competing, you know, regulations between utilities. We did this with no additional FTEs, but allow us to streamline our operations to make sure that we're effectively and efficiently dedicating the needed staff resources to our water network, our sewer network, and our, our street network.
Can you bring a little, little, what was the example?
Yes, so we, we enforce, you know, man's water main grates, but we also have sewer backups and we have sewer cleaning that we need to perform. Under the previous setup, utilities was water and sewer. So we would pull all those crews and they would all focus on that water main grate or that water improvement or whatever it might be. What they work, really working very much on sewer. But then that would also happen on the sewer side, there was a repair or a treatment we had done, we would then move all those crews over to the sewer side. E crew was already maintaining stormwater, and that is a very similar type of utility to sanitary. It's a ground defense system, it runs, generally speaking, downhill, and we see pumping uphill. So combining those two light functions created those synergies of, of, again, two functions that are already operating in a very similar way. So that water could then focus on the lead program developed from the water grates. And sewer could focus on maintaining, you know, the storm system, manholes, and sanitary sewers. So stepping in the water distribution, and water is comprised of, of course, water distribution, but it is also the water plant, which Adam will be talking about shortly after me. So we are the conveyance mechanism for the water that the water plant creates and supplies to the community. So starting off, with some of those, those policy that I listed earlier, we do have some annual programs set up each year. And the first one is the service line replacement program. And this really touches on the lead service line inventory that I mentioned earlier. We have three hundred thousand that we've requested to be dedicated each year, and this has been in place in previous years as well. And this is to support that program where we are, you know, replacing lines that we may find that, that meet the criteria for replacement. But this also supports the equipments and mechanisms that we have in place to both identify the lines and maintain or replace them as necessary. The next annual program that we have, again, currently in place, is our counter maintenance repairs. I like to describe this as it's in between, you know, our standard, you know, emergency maintenance, and it's not as great as the large CIP, you know, main road replacement programs that can touch on the repair. So this covers, you know, a couple of valve replacements. We find, you know, a stem or a section of pipe that, that needs to be replaced or is in poor condition. But it's not enough that we need to completely do the entire squeeze or this entire area. But it provides that strength in the valve, and that's not just an emergency point repair in the sixteen. I did wanna touch a little bit on those larger projects that made share earlier this morning. So with all of our projects, all of these projects, we like to make sure that we're maintaining those utilities underneath the ground. So we don't have to come back a few years later and dig up the nearly paved road or really a bike path or whatever that infrastructure might be. So then you talk about the Vine Street reconstruction. We did look at the water on, on that street. It was constructed in the fifties and sixties and it is starting at that age. And we see in those, those years of pipes, those pipes of pipe that it can start to degrade and have more frequency breaks. So we wanna make sure that that pipe is replaced as well. The same thing goes for both the roadway and the asphalt. We've seen a higher frequency of breaks in those areas, and we also want to make sure that we are maintaining adequate capacity. Earlier in the mid nineteen hundreds and then some, going a little bit to the late nineteen hundreds, the standards were updated on the size of the pipe to make sure that there is, you know, sufficient and adequate flows to neighborhoods, to businesses, to fire hydrants. And so as we come across these lines, we wanna make sure that we replace and improve them, provide that, that excellent customer service, that excellent supply that we top here in the city of Westerville.
I mean, I'm in the fifth, eighth, eighth year of record. I just wanted to see the policy. When the street is coming in, you're really buying the street, you're just paying what you paid for. But if the street is not coming in, you're doing buying, you gotta work. Does the, does the utility fund actually take care of the street repair? Or is it separate, the water, the water line is due and the, and the street repair is a general fund? What's the policy change there?
That is a great question. It is actually a mixture of both. It really depends on the scenario and location and what's coming next. So we partner with Planning and Development as part of the street program. If there is a larger water break, and there's a larger patch, we will work with them and support them through the street program to do a more complete, wider patch. If it's a smaller one, let's say it's a small valve replacement, the hole may be four foot by four foot. That's something that we would handle in-house with our crews and our partners. So it would be a mixture of that.
Do you or Adam, that handle the energy points with Columbus and Delco, you, you were able to some of those valves or, uh, from that?
It's a great question. It is, again, a combination. So we have all the valves throughout the system, so operating both our interconnection with Delco, as well as our interconnection with the city of Columbus, we would operate those valves and ensure they're in working condition. Adam would of course, the water plant, would ultimately make the, the final decision, if so, about that interconnection and whether or not it is needed or could be supplied at any given time. We wanna make sure the plant has capacity at that time to supply it, or if we need, you know, support performance, we work together on that.
Thank you.
So the lead pipes, how can we, how much do we, are left to do, pipe on board to replace them? If there is some indication in the lead or something?
That's a great question. So the guidelines and guidance on it is fun to read. But what we have done and what utilities are doing is using the utilization strategy that looks at the entire city, the entire distribution system. It looks at, you know, the age of the pipe, it looks at past regulations, and then identifies strategic areas that could be the potential for having lead or galvanized required replacement in, in the other one. So if we know a, a service line or a home's installed in the two thousands, we're not gonna waste our time going out there because land has already been banned by that forms. And so utilizing that data, we had, we have confirmed that there was an area of about twenty-two hundred properties that we needed to investigate because we were not sure or we did not identify its material based on historical records. So we've been working on that since last year. We've already knocked off, I can't do math quickly in my head. We have about seven hundred properties left that we need to look at to confirm its, its material. Throughout that process, we have not found any lead lines. We're anticipating on finding any. I will say that we did find one lead line through another project, and what we came to heard there was, you know, whenever the line was being installed, you know, sixty, seventy years ago, whenever that might be, a contractor may have grabbed the pipe and just installed it, but it was not something that was actively supported, coached at it. So by 2027, we have to identify all of those seven hundred lines, identify what material is. If anything is not identified at that point, it has to be considered for replacement, because we don't know if it's lead or galvanized or not. So as time goes on, as we identify, we will start to develop that replacement list, and we'll be back here in front of council and sharing both our findings as well as replacement programs as they come up. And then, I didn't mention the galvanized required replacement, I'll just touch on that quickly. So that's a galvanized line that was suspected or was previously connected to a lead line. It was considered to be a lead line at that point, even though it's technically galvanized. So we have to replace those as well.
And with respect to the sewer pipes, is there a way that you can figure out when you stress or something, it's likely to break if the temperature is strong? Is there a way to, oh, actually, before a whole line of, yeah?
Definitely, and that's actually my next line of sewers, so it's okay, I'll, I'll hold for a little bit on, on the sewer. So the last thing I wanted, oh, sorry.
What you were talking about, the lead lines? Is that city side or is that what Melissa did with Mitch Todd or Sam can answer the, the, the?
It is both sides, yes.
I know.
Yes, it requires us to look at both sides and then, and then identify both sides. And then we also identify the customers as well. So later on this year, we'll send another round of notices for our customers saying, hey, you're either unknown or it's galvanized, and hopefully not lead, but lead in that that way.
So those seven hundred are essentially the household that didn't do that, then?
Correct, yeah. And if you think about the city, we have identified potentially fourteen thousand connections, and these are connections that have been made over the past hundred-plus years since we had the utility system. So we need to work through and update our data through this process. So as we get closer to that, you know, that zero mark of identifying all these, that number may update. You know, it may find, okay, well, this probably, this may be no longer here, or the service line's an old fountain that's no longer in place. And so we remove that from, from the, from the process.
It's kind of hard to imagine that, you know, from the fifties, where you didn't send the slip, but they were.
Correct, yes. If we know there's no lead, we need that required.
So does the homeowner know in advance if he finds individual lead pipes in your post to their home, something that you're gonna need to come in and, and run that? And is there like a number or limits or a vacant gauge if it's harmful or not, or we're asking?
Hundred percent. So we have no public water mains that are throughout the entire state. So this is really focused on service lines. If we identify or we find them, we will notify customers immediately, but we're also required by DPA to notify them immediately and notify DPA. So we will tell the customers, should that situation arise, we will work hastily to, to have it replaced. As far as monitoring, that is something that is handled through the water treatment pit, but there is active monitoring that goes on for lead all throughout the city. It's been going on for decades, it continues to go on, will continue to meet and see requirements. And that's really because we have done a phenomenal job of managing our system, and we don't have any lead water mains. It's just maybe there's some sort of.
There's also an entire communication plan around this, so as David pointed out, they received a postcard that told them, you are inspected, one line. Here's how you can look at your service line and tell us whether it's lead or copper or another type of pipe. If you're not comfortable doing that, here's our phone number, call us. We will send a staff member out to check it for you. So there are options for the property owner. The seven hundred, we haven't answered that yet. They're gonna get another notice that says, hey, here's how you can check it yourself. If not, here's how you can call us. At some point, we'll have to go door to door and knock every doors, because as Grant pointed out, if we don't have a clear answer, we haven't had it checked out, we have to assume it's lead. And nobody wants to assume it's lead, because that means you'll have to set up a, a program to replace those, either using our funding source or forcing a private property owner to fix it on their side. So we would rather have a clear answer, it is not lead, or it was not tied to lead at any point in the past, so that we can clearly tell, you know, highly yay, we're clean, we don't need to spend any money, and our private property owners don't need to spend any money.
If it is lead, is it safe for them to use their water or would they be there out there?
Yes, it would still be safe, because we, we do ongoing testing and the treatment plan, the certain treatment processes that Adam touched on, that helps the pipes and protect them from that. the certain treatment processes that Adam touched on, that helps the pipes and protect them from that. I would have to check our inventory to make sure all schools are updated. But we have started doing some in-person candidacy and events monitoring. We are building two businesses and residences and helping assist with the identification. So I can't say off the top of my head if they've all been done, but we certainly will be on the list to, to double check. As far as funding goes, we have not sought any external funding yet because we have not identified a major replacement program this year. Funding has been reduced, but funding is still available. And it's really focused in many cases on some more disadvantaged and more challenging utilities. Not, not that Westerville wouldn't meet that requirement, but it'd be much more challenging for a well-rounded, well-organized utility that doesn't have some of those disadvantaged challenges that certain utilities have. Hopefully, not, not avoid the plastic, you know, we won't have to see that in the future because of the program that's in place now. The last quick thing I want to touch on, and, and thank you Chair for actually teeing this up a little bit earlier, is developing a proactive condition and risk-based replacement plan and Dr. Crum as well. So utilizing our previous consequence of failure probability plan, we're looking and starting to combine that with what we are seeing in health and our networks and our knowledge of the types, construction units of our pipes to turn that into a proactive plan where we look forward into the future and plan out a, a replacement plan for these pipes that's maybe not led by street replacements, but is more so led by the future condition of the pipe to make sure that we are continuing that, that safe and reliable service for our customers. So that's something that is currently being worked on and being developed. We hope to, you know, have that replaced and we'll discuss that with council next year with something where it's just a dream material right now. Pipes are leading to the creek as far as stormwater drainage. So it is a mixture of materials. PVC is one of those materials. There's also concrete, there's clay, there's a variety of materials that convey stormwater. Next, I've been committed to sanitary. I provided some pictures for you on the outside of sanitary. I decided I would refrain from providing pictures of the inside of the sanitary.
I asked him for it. And he tells me no.
Well, the pipe at the top left is a little bit open, but you can't, can't see a whole lot there. So starting off with, with our ongoing annual program, again, it's a capital management program. And this focuses on the most effective treatment for our sanitary system, which is lining. It is a gravity system, it is not under pressure like water mains. So it generally just sits there in the ground and conveys that drainage or that sewage downstream. And so it's an incredibly effective system where they do a cast-in-place lining. It basically lines it with a PVC pipe on the inside of the system and then adds, you know, upwards of another hundred years of life to that pipe.
That's a saw thing?
Yes, it looks like a saw cutting. But then once it's cured, it's, it's rock salt, like a hard PVC. And then also, you know, quick repairs for systems, as you see in the pictures above you, who repairs to our thousands of sanitary manholes or when they access to the sanitary service system?
I'm going with the, how does, how does marketing call it? plumber certified flushable stuff? That is really not, how are we doing that?
So there is, there is no such thing as a flushable wipe, even though they're flushable wipes. All sewer treatment plants share their concerns with, you know, flushable wipes and the challenges that they have with maintaining it and treating it. Thankfully for us, all of our sewage is conveyed to Columbus. So from that portion of it is their problem. But we do see blockages that can be caused by the pileup of those wipes that don't be very quick enough that it would break up and flow down.
Usually there is a, somebody that, you said, we had that. I think it was in Marner's Cove, maybe that.
Usually there is a contributing factor that's added to it, such as roots, which of course will have water running into it, or a sag in the pipe, or something else that starts to catch and then it just piles up like a, like a multi-car pileup of, of wipes. So yes, it, it can definitely be a, a challenge.
But the risk is you're draining the face of your source. I think it was, I think we might have been told a decade ago.
Is there a chance that these companies can, do something about that?
So we continue to educate our residents.
Definitely, no way.
Education is really the best.
I've, I've asked the, actually tried to, like maybe the oil, to do a option. I'm too false out of that. I mean, it's really ridiculous that they actually say it's flushable and the sewer system is being impacted by it and it would affect us individually.
Well, I mean technically they're flushable, they're just not treatable. And that's where I don't know how we could sue them. It is flushable as our washcloths and other cloths that.
What exactly, is that approved to make the wipes?
Yeah, it looks like they would, yes.
Oh yeah, definitely not flushable.
Yeah, they're all not flushable, no wipes whatsoever.
No wipes whatsoever are flushable. I mean, flushable, but they will pop up.
It's all about how quickly they can graze on the system.
Yes. But any trash not.
Who do you know on?
Yeah, you know.
To, to some of the projects.
Do you think it's falling?
Yeah. Maybe downhill on the slides. So as Nate mentioned, you know, the planning street project, which we're really excited for, we looked at sanitary service system in the area and we want to make sure we mind those sanitary, the sanitary lines in the area. But you, it rehabilitates the pipe with a new line on the side of it. It adds, you know, hundreds of years of the pipe. Most sanitary service systems are located outside of the roadway, in backyards or across, across the street. That's why you really don't see that much sanitary work as part of road work. It's because it's generally in a backyard or an easement, not impacted or beaten by a road project. And then also, we did identify P Street Court as a, an area that can use some additional, you know, repair. It's a, it's a line that receives a lot of maintenance from our staff. We actually go out to whatever scene we want to jet the pipe to clean it. We identify the, the little sag in the line, the little sags, they start to collect material which can ultimately build up and cause blockages. So next year, we're requesting to strip this on, on that line to complete the replacement in partnership with, with Nate and Plating and Development. I did want to note some specialized equipment under the sanitary sewer pipe because this really supports the sanitary operation and also force references, even the price form that gets sanitary. And it's the addition of another jetter and hydro excavator truck. This was originally planned for 2028, but with our adjustments to our operations and creating a dedicated water crew and a dedicated sewer crew, both crews again competing priorities and competing uses this truck. The truck is used heavily to dig holes for water breaks for sanitary repairs. It's also used to jet and clean our sewer line. So a line is using the truck and the water break, sewer can't use it to clean the line and vice versa. When I put this presentation together, I, I noticed, oh, we actually showed this truck in use in the picture. As you can see on the bottom right-hand corner, the silver tube that goes down to the pit, that is the tube that goes to the hydro excavator truck, digging a hole for sanitary sewer. And then stepping back to water, that top right picture, again, you see the tube there from the hydro excavator fixing between water and creek. So having two of these trucks both increase the occupancy, but ensures that both crews can actively use the equipment they need to maintain both utilities at the same time and support one another.
So we're going to get the whole kit, the whole thing for?
Yes.
And this is that white box seat line?
Yes, we like to call it like a top pack, a multi-gerb, a top pack. So it's like a dirt, water, lots of, lots of big things. And then you can also, if you jetter and send a tube, you know, sewers, be cleaning out blockages, such as the roots or creeds or whatever.
Oh, we're not dividing it here?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay, okay. Can we, can we put some more or maybe we're heading on?
Yeah. I see a crystal plaque in the back.
Like some of our vehicles have nice branding.
Crystal frames with you. Yes, yes, lucky.
Because it's kind of, I didn't know what it was until just last year. And it's all over. I think it's a little low.
Yeah, it's almost too small, but it's beautiful.
It kind of looks creepy, but it's like on your street.
Yeah, I think it's nice because it tells people it's a class of maybe.
Yeah.
So then the last point on sanitary sewer we'll share is, you know, I touched on it earlier, but it's our strategic plan for maintaining our sewer system. So as I said, we have this phenomenal set of data of all of our sewers, all thread and type of system. And so digging through that to the one that puts together a strategic plan going forward to maintain line and repair our system before there's a blockage, before it turns into a maintenance nightmare, if you will, for staff having to go over and over and over again. One of the most important things with a sanitary sewer system is catching the port. It gets too far down the road. The pipes are incredibly strong when they're put in place properly and maintained in shape. Once that starts to change, the cost increases drastically. When we perform linings, that is the most cost-effective, that's the most cost-efficient way of maintaining it. And so we always want to make sure we're doing that. If it gets to a certain point, we can no longer make line it, then we have to do a completely replacement. Or if there is a deficiency that requires replacement, not line it. So developing this strategic plan will allow us to utilize our rate payers and residents and our business owners most effectively. We sit at like, again, for hundred plus years, whatever that treatment might be. Again, don't have that for you today, but we look forward to having that for you next year with the new program.
What's the adverse influence to his problems or adverse feelings about that?
It, it heavily depends on what the issue is. So our most prevalent, I would say, problem would be a black back, a blockage that can be caused by, you know, grease, pileup of wipes. Where it's, you know, a grease pileup or, you know, other types of pileups, those are relatively quick, a few hours. Going to start talking about prevalence of roots, you know, roots are really thick. And if you deal with roots around your tree at home, you know, it can be challenging to break. It's even more challenging when it's a hundred foot down a pipe and you can't access it. So we have to use specialized equipment to cut it out and then work to make sure it doesn't come back. Just cutting it out doesn't remove it per se. It will contain and seep that water source forward in order. So we actually have a root treatment program that we perform as well. It's a plumbing agent that helps to kill roots, it has a three-year warranty. But you have to do it over and over and over again. So the only way to really prevent roots is to line the pipe and then you remove that water source and access the water source. But that would be probably the most, I'm assuming, other than the custom key replacement or digging up and repairing such a pipe. Next one to talk about. The, if you're not aware, this is a complex facility at heart. It is built on top of that as we look to improve and maintain it for, you know, the future, that it is the right and proper setup to maintain our operations so that it's not, again, competing with other, other operations and supports what staff needs to provide services that we not only provide what, you know, our customers certainly, but also city staff through vehicles and other items. So we have that requested in 2026 as well.
And couldn't this be part of our solar?
Yes, we have already talked with Chris specifically about the 370 million, that's the newer building. That roof is one great option for that. The roof on the lower building, the 350 buildings, it's a flab roof and it's older. And so we want to make sure that that structure could be able to support the solar project.
What about the?
The 370, yeah.
Yes.
That's the one we're looking at.
Oh, that one right there. Oh, that's where you were looking at.
Yeah, solar would probably be there. This is the older building, the 350 building. This is the storage structure that's starting to see some shifts. And again, this is the, the result line, which could be another solar potential option, but we're working.
But that would be the better, what we're going to remember.
Uh, that could be an option. We'll, we'll check, check that out with, with the solar provider to see if that's possible.
Mike, you have brought that up.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, again, one of the challenges is the landfill. You make sure that the structure can support the habit weight because there is that material underneath that doesn't have what we call the virgin or the sturdy soil to support it.
But you all like that.
Last thing I want to touch on, some equipment that supports most of our street operations and all similar operations. So the first one is the anti-icing applicator. That's fancy for saying it's, it's a brine applicator. So with the purchase of all of our new salt trucks, we try to ensure that they are what's called a swap loader or hook lift truck. And you see here on the left picture, this is the setup that is a swap loader or hook lift truck. And what that means is our salt trucks work in the winter, they cloud snow, they put salt down. Once the winter's over, they could potentially sit the rest of the year. And we try to use them for different various purposes. But having this hook lift or swap loader opens up the opportunities for us to make these trucks all-season trucks without adding additional equipment or fleet. We can provide more operations and services versus having to buy another truck or another trailer. And so that's where the anti-icing applicator comes in. Is this would be a hook lift setup that we can use when the salt trucks put a large tank on it, as you'll see at the top right, and then we can start to apply brine to our roadway network. And brine is a, is a very cost-effective and environmentally, environmentally friendly way of pre-treating the roadways with salt. Without putting rock salt down where it bounces and you can land and re cutter, this puts it strategically on the roads where it needs to go. As we look to add more of these, we hope to cover more of the city's, more of our materials are collected and residentialized, reducing our, our necessity on rock salt, which certainly will always have its purpose and its need. But we can reduce the additional amount of salt that is put on the roadway supporting sustainability initiatives.
Isn't the brine, is the brine like, like thirty percent of what we would put down to your production line? It's like, it's a convenient safety.
I, I think we actually hit the number right in the head, is, is a thirty percent reduction. I'm going to talk about the, I'll just jump into the brine making system now. So we are, we're incredibly privileged here to have not only brine, but a product called B Heat that supplies a handful of chemicals including beet juice. And it helps to reduce the freezing point way below a salt connection. Salt generally goes down to fifteen degrees. B Heat goes down to zero degrees. And so with a combination of brine and B Heat and upgrades our brine making system, we can combine these chemicals and use it to do beet. we can combine these chemicals and use it to be more effective during some of harsher storms. But also, as we mentioned, we have reduced the amount of salt that can be utilized within our network. Something else I want to note with the brine making system, this was originally planned again for this year's... See, I can question the question. Our staff did a phenomenal job looking at our existing system and found some, some areas that can be repaired and improved, but still utilize the general setup of it and ultimately shave off a hundred thousand dollars from these requests. So we're doing the exact same thing of increasing our capacity, increasing our effectiveness, but we've ultimately saved a hundred thousand dollars in the request thanks to the work from our staff and builders that they had investigating our system.
You said a handful, and you clarified, we had changed the ingredient list in Columbus.
Absolutely not, it is always road salt. It's just a mixture of road salt and water. So if we need to be a little bit stronger of salt, we can do that. But we can mix the B Heat with that as well. B Heat is definitely more expensive and it has to be imported in, it's not something that we can make. And so we will look to mix it in a way that's most effective for the type of storm in our city. We don't want to do a hundred percent B Heat if it's only going to be fifteen degrees. But if it's going to be negative five, we're doing a hundred percent B Heat because that's the only thing that's going to work. And then lastly, we are requesting three swap loader beds for our swap loader trucks. As you can see on the bottom left, we don't have a bulldozer. We don't need a bulldozer, but we do have tons of other equipment that can be transported with it. Currently that's done by sewer trailers throughout the city through different departments. With this swap loader bed, we can again utilize these trucks in general sense throughout the other seasons and transport equipment. We're also looking at it as a way to transport road closed equipment and after years and other equipment for events and other activities throughout the city. Currently that's handled again by additional trailers that we have to buy or by vans or enclosed trailers. And then utilizing equipment we already have and just buying additional bed, we can be more effective and ask as clear as possible, as possible.
And they have a lot of expectancy, but with the heat, how long, how long would they last?
The beds? So the, I mean, the beds will generally last a very long time. They'll actually probably last longer than a truck. It will mostly, it'll probably last longer than the replacement of a truck. Just because it's a solid metal sheet, as long as it doesn't rust out or have structural deficiencies. Our salt trucks, we expect to last ten, twelve years. They have a very, very hard life. Driving it work throughout the year actually helps it out a little bit better versus just sitting even dry running, you know, all summer long. Make sure that that truck is continually, it's going to be three out in here. Any other questions before I turn it over to Abby?
Yeah, so the fleet budget is completely centered coming back along from the budget and we'll go over that during operations. Adam, come on down.
Okay, water plant, our slides are pretty simple because we're focused on monumental architecture. I did want to say though, you know, the ability wouldn't see the sort pictures, but if you ever get a chance to watch a root cutting video, it's actually very good. And it just might be so natural. I think it would be interesting to do it. So, all right, let's get into this. Obviously, infrastructure in our facility is important. Our facility is very old and a lot that we forget about that is, but this facility itself has been around since the seventies and the location we're in. And we actually had a hundred year last year that we've been providing water to the city of West Lethal. I may be counting earlier, it's probably like thirty years last time and it's been over a couple of months. And I want to recap the projects we did this year, it's been a really big year for us on capital. The Max Town Tower was painted, was finished. That project was a couple of years old, if you remember, there's been a lot of, a lot of headaches with the towers. But it went online, Max Town went online on June twenty first. So that was finally done, it looks great. The project did a really good job. There's just site work being finished now, basically that project is completely done. Outer brine tower is also painted, it went online yesterday. So we are finally have water in it. It still has a lot of finished work to be finished up. The key mobile towers will still be coming down, it's a temporary tower, it's decided. That work still has to be done, that equipment moved back down to the tower. A lot of things happened with that, with weather and天气, but we have finally got it aligned with both towers. And then the emergency root repairs that we did this year, either the line we talked about at council, the door, that project is done and it's working very well. I'm just going to give a picture of the little bit, you can see it's just like super thick plastic with like a twenty year warranty that allowed us to line that entirely blue and it did a really good job without having to have a ton of site work. The cost was very manageable, very light, a whole rebuild would have been. That actually went online early August. So we, and we actually repaired the roof when we signed it. Both our roof had issues and we had to repair it, so both crews are online now and we, and we're good there. That's turned out really well. So it's been a really, really long year for us as far as capital. It's all very, our staff really handled those projects well. It took a lot of work, especially Max Town, there was a lot of coordination with distribution. And our crews have been carrying pressure on that high side without any towers. So going into 2026, we only have a few projects. The salt water ready card breeder project for us is, we have a salt water station in our water plant right now. So we sell salt water to contractors, to people who are flying pesticides or herbicides in some cases. They have a legion of little trucks inside the plant. So the way that's done right now is kind of an on your honor system. They can get a code and that allows them to turn on the equipment. But they, they go inside, they fill out a thing about how much water they're supposed to be giving and all that stuff. To be quite honest, it's not always done. So some of these loads are not being charged in some cases. Or maybe not the correct amount because they're asking how much they're using. There's not a flow unit to tell them how much they actually use. Well, sometimes people forget and it's, and then it's just so it's hard to track. It's really, it takes a lot of work on our part too because new customers come in and they have the ability to buy it. So they're like, they can buy a couple loads and then they don't get a code and then we have to go manually enter a code in so that for them to be able to get it. It's just, it's really labor intensive on our part. The other problem is too, is that it's just, it's just maintaining that system overall has just been a problem. So what we're wanting to do is we're wanting to swap that out and go to a system where all water is purchased at that point. So it would be hands off for us entirely, the system will work autonomously. And so a bidder comes in and it's the first load, hundred float, whatever doesn't matter, they just come in and they respond to the pipe start. And they buy their water, they'll heat it, they'll charge it from the ladder mount, everybody wins. They'll take the bill, help the mar staff then, that system will work separate. That's stage one, I'll be honest with you, because the goal of mine has been always to get this system out of the water. Right now, we are, we are, the facility is open during the day, but it's closed at night, it's closed on weekends, we gate it off. For us, they allow access to this system, that gate has to be open. It's open way too long, it's open on weekends, so our contractors can get to the system. I want to get a lot of that. So there's a lot of traffic there, we have a lot of construction. And we want to be able to just allow them to access that whatever time they want to, whenever they want to and not a regular. Well, it won't really be that hard. Salt water stations are pretty common, lots of people around us have them. The biggest problem is finding the location. So that's what we've been, that's really been the hard part for us, is find the location where it works best and it disrupts people the least. But to be honest, the way our system works right now, we would have been able to move it out of the plant anyways. Because without being able to have a guard reader, reader requires a ton of work on our end. So you're maintaining accounts and you're, and people are just coming up to it and, you know. Well, they can't do it without a code, but the thing is, is that we can't manage the codes, we don't know who got it, we don't know. And then new customers, like say somebody wants to fill out the tank and flutter their guard, they can't do that without getting a whole other code, going through a process this way. Swipe the card, fill your tank in the back of your pickup truck, a lot of your money. So it's a really good project, it's got a lot of site maintenance. It's not a really big project, but there's, they will really enhance things a lot.
I mean, I think it's just like a gas station or a lottery.
It's kind of, yeah, kind of. But we, the problem is, is we have to handle different site maintenance, right? I mean, we get tanker trucks, you know, semi trucks that hold five six thousand gallons of water for them. And they need to be able to fill versus having somebody go in a tanker truck and eat it or something, you know. So there is some variability there. And like I said, our, during the spring and sometime during the summer, our parking level back up, a lot of people lined up. There's kind of, we probably get, I bet you this day we've had sixty-five percent of people at the front of the road today. Then it goes a lot weird the time of the road during the winter, but, so we need, we'll keep the system open, probably our plans will be...